...presentation, I am the moderator of the discussions. The discussions today actually broken into two pieces. This session right now is relatively brief on this press briefing. And it's focused on simply getting the image and a picture of what this exciting project is for the community. This afternoon, there will be an open house running from 3:00 PM until 9:00 PM this evening at the community center where anybody is welcome to come take a look at all these things you see here and ask any questions you might have on the same. Let me just start with something that sometimes we lose sight of. Today's a rainy and cold day. And it's a day that not many people have the opportunity to come down and enjoy the waterfront. The project, the public private agreement that's being unveiled today is one that invites the public to the waterfront, to the Hudson, 12 months a year so that they can enjoy it through that period of time. Let me start, if I could, with just an outline of the protocol. We will have Mayor Cambrary first start. He will talk a little bit about the waterfront and yield the floor to Louis Capelli who's with us today. They will jointly unveil the model of the project which is at the rear of the room. And the architect, Peter Schaper from Boston, will then guide us through what the project is. Michael Zarin, who's the special legal counsel for the Village of Austin, will then talk about the public protection and the public interest in this project. And at that time, we will be concluding the meeting. We thank all of you for coming this morning. And with that introduction, if I could, Mr. Mayor, yield to the Village of Austin Mayor, Thomas Cambrary.
It's a great day for Austin, that's for sure. After too many years of planning and talking, the mixed-use plan we have together arrived at here today is a sensible, doable, positive step for all the people of the Village of Austin. The board is pleased that this outstanding Harper Square project is moving ahead and we look forward to the public's continuing participation. We have spent almost 30 years in preparation with wide public participation in every step of the way. Be assured that the public participation will continue right up to the shovel goes into the ground and probably beyond. To ensure that our residents know about the plans, we will have several open houses which include a model of the project which we will see shortly. The first will be held today, as you heard, at the Austin Community Center, 3 to 9:00 PM. After the holidays, several more will be held. The Alliance for Downtown Austin will host an open house breakfast on Thursday, January 10th at 8:15 AM for all you with early risers at Danny's Cafe dot com. The village and the developer listened and heard the people during the draft environmental hearings. The project has been downsized. Now 61% of the total parcel is open space. Bucets have been improved. The entire left side of the valley property is now completely open space, as you will see over here, if you haven't already seen it on the diagram. Our exciting revised plans include existing ferry dock, the fishing and fishing pier, a small park, and esplanade that will run all the entire circumference of the property. There will be a restaurant, commercial shops and stores, and to pay for all of this, 180 units of housing, including 10% affordable, let's not forget that. There simply was no sense bringing incomplete plans back and forth and back and forth to the people until we had a plan. Negotiations have been difficult and have taken longer than both sides would have liked. The board of trustees, while anxious to get this project into the ground, more importantly, wanted to get it right. The village is in excellent financial health. A homework has been done. The plan will be further refined. All is in readiness. The mixed-use project of firm to this kind in the Hudson is only the first domino of redevelopment of our water river front that will be a trendsetter for smart growth from the Hudson Valley. It will increase our tax base, bring us disposable income, create jobs, bring more people to the river, and provide access to the river our residents have never had before. Today, the iron is hot. Louis Capelli has a proven record of making things happen. Capelli Enterprises has already shown due diligence in this project and has spent over $2 million in soft costs. We look forward to working with Capelli Enterprises and the people of Austin to make this project the best it can be. All of us, working together, have brought Austin to this point. There'll be no turning back now. I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce a few of our public officials or people who will have an opportunity later. Richard Wishney, our county latest leader is here. Michael O'Connor, our town councilman is here. Oh, Sadie Galloway, our state assembly person. Hi Sadie, good to see you. There are others we'll introduce later, but I just wanted to introduce our public official who we're very proud to have him here with us. Without any further ado, my great privilege to present to you, as I said, a guy who really makes things happen, who has worked very hard with us to bring this project forward. He believes in it as we do. He believes in the deep in his heart that this project is meant to be, that this project will be the best for us. I can testify to that. As I said, we're very proud to have him. I'd like to invite him here now to say a few words.
I only have one page, so it won't stick. Thank you for having me. And I would like to say to all of the residents of Austin and the people of Westchester that this project is one of the most, if not the most important projects in my company. One would say, why would that be the case? We have projects in our plans, we have projects in other places. I'll tell you why it's the case. It's the case because there's tremendous credibility underlying here. It's the case because there were more doubters in this project than any other project that we've ever had. It was the case because this project is a model project on the waterfront, one that everybody's going to look at, one that everybody's going to take a stock in as we build. This project has taken us three years to listen to the public, to listen to the village, to listen to the board, to listen to the people who did not want the project to happen and the people who did want the project to happen. And after listening to all of those people, I think we've come up with a spectacular plan. It's a compromised plan than the first plan that we thought we would want to build here, but it's a great plan. It's a spectacular plan, so much so that we have the model covered over, but we don't want you to see it early. Isn't that good? And I would say to you that you've heard two things in the last three years. We heard open space and we heard public space. Open space, as the mayor said, is something that we've definitely done our homework on. We have 60% open space on the waterfront. Public space, on this project, as opposed to any other project that we've ever done, there are more things here for the public in the way of the community ferry waiting station, the fishing pier, the restaurants, the promenade, the playgrounds and the health clubs. These things that are a project, that's a rental project, the health club especially, is not something normally that's open to the public, but here it is. And I'm going to let Peter go through the plan, because no one would do that, but he's really the author of all of this and he's done a great job. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to introduce Peter to, I think, come up here now or we'll find him along.
order of the building of Austin.
Thank you. It's a pleasure being here. I'm Peter Schaper, permanent fellow Schaper, we're in Austin. And it was really an exciting time when Joe invited us to come down here and see what we could see differently perhaps than what had been seen for, I guess, a year, year and a half before with a different architect. And what I'd like to do is to walk you through these drawings and I think it will explain our thinking. And in fact, you will see the second board, which are some photographs of this site. It was taken really sort of in the same kind of condition. I've been down here many times and I know it's sunny. But it is sort of interesting that that's where we started, that's where we are today, and I think you'll see some very nice images. When we started, the first thing Louis had said was to make it very clear to us what some of the major issues were so that as we would look at this site, we would have that in mind. And the first was clearly open space. The second was, can I speak from here? I'm going to walk over here so I can see better. Why don't we bring that as you're speaking to this way? Can everyone hear if I talk this way?
Media.
Can I take the mic?
No, but you need to have it.
That doesn't work.
How about somebody holding the mic?
Joe, why don't you put the first board on the first one there?
This is the hard question. Joe, what's the difference? That's a pretty good idea. Okay. So the first thing was to make sure we were increasing the open space and that clearly included preserving the views of the Hudson River specifically as we came up from the train station and through Seacore Road ramp. The second was to reduce the number of rental housing units. The third was to provide adequate parking and therefore increase the amount of parking from what was originally proposed. And then the fourth was to make sure we included this as a mixed-use development. The chart here, which I'm sure many of you have difficulty seeing from the distance, I'm just going to point out the major differences when we got involved, which was the DEIS, the previous plan, and the current. There really are two plans which the developer is putting forth in this FEIS. And this is similar to each of the four points that are above. So first, in site coverage, it's been said a couple of times now that the site coverage in terms of open space is now 60% open space. In the original plan, that site coverage was only 48% of open space. So that's an enormous increase. The second is the rental housing units. Rental housing units in the previous scheme were 225. In both of these two schemes, we call them A and C, that's 180 units is where we are. The number of parking spaces originally was 229. And the only difference really between our scheme A and scheme C, and that came about as a result of working with the town, was the difference in the number of parking spaces. And in one of the schemes, the number of parking spaces is 297, and the other scheme is 375. And for those who have an interest in that, it's a relationship with the amount of cars to the number of housing units. In the first scheme, A, the 297 is 1.2 cars per unit, and the 375 in scheme C is 1.7 cars per unit. And I'll explain a little bit how that's how that's achieved. The last piece to note as a mixed-use development, the retail and restaurant and fitness club that Louis had talked about, the difference in square footage assigned to that originally was about 16,000. Currently, it's a little over 14,000. So I think that's all for this.
That white is very well.
I did notice, by the way, that those who came early enough were walking around and I would encourage those of you who came in a little later, to please come up here and see the illustrations a little closer. This is the way that I would hope any architect, we surely do, start a project is to go down, walk the project so to get a sense for what the site is like. And these first three pictures are simply photographs of the area that you all know very well, and they are photographs of the train station, the character of that station, the hip roof which sits on top of the building, and Seacore Road ramp. The second two pictures are pictures really of the site itself, an industrial site which has long since seen its heyday and has wonderful opportunity. And the last two pictures at the bottom are really simply pictures of the adjacent site. What's it feel like to be around here? One of the pictures here, the one on the left, is this building that we're in right now, which is actually part of, it sits on, public land. So there's an interesting opportunity there. And the last picture is, to the north, a building which is very much like the buildings that we'll be talking about here, a wharf-style building. So it sort of sits there sort of quietly because it looks old and tired, but it has the character of a wharf-style building. And what do I mean by that? They're long, thin buildings which are typically perpendicular to the water. They've been built that way for centuries, towns all over the place, in this country and abroad. So these are some illustrations of wharf-style buildings. And it really came about in the first presentation that I made at Capelli's office when they were interested in seeing whether or not I could in fact come up with some new ideas. And this was really what I brought with me. I said, you know, I live in Boston. Boston is right on the water. There are wharf buildings. For those of you who know Boston, Quincy Market is the picture on the left. 25 years ago was redeveloped into a major center, retail center, and mixed-use center in Boston, and helped revitalize the whole downtown Boston. It's just a different place. I moved up there originally 30 years ago from New York. This is alive. And the other pictures here are illustrations of other buildings. Rose Walk in Charlestown, we're doing a new hotel. They are wharf-style buildings. Again, they're perpendicular to the water. They're always perpendicular to the water so they do not block the views of people who are on the backside of the building. If you have the building parallel to the water, you can't see through the building. But in buildings which are perpendicular to the water, especially serieses of them with a narrow edge, it's perpendicular facing water, you look between the buildings, otherwise sort of a view carved as to the water. There are four illustrations here. The top one is what was presented in the old scheme. So this photograph is really a computer generation done by another architectural firm. Had a building up here, so on Seacore Road, you would see a building before you would see the Hudson. The picture below is what you see now. That is exactly what you will see in the future. Two illustrations here are in the reverse direction, before I'm looking back. The first illustration indicates a building which is pretty much parallel to the river. Therefore, you can't see through it. And the drawing that we have done below is an illustration of buildings which are perpendicular to the river, so you're seeing the hillside beyond. Now, there are two drawings here. We call this scheme A. The first drawing is a site plan, typically applying law and looking down and seeing the amount of green space and park, the two dark bars on the proposed buildings. Here, the northernmost of the site, and one a little bit further down, the red building is the train station. And from that, I think you can see is that any view from the train station in this direction is unencumbered by buildings. The picture below is simply an illustration of how much open space is there. Everything shown in red is building. Roughly 40% of the site is building plus, what's in green, gray, is a little bit of parking and road surface. Everything that is in green, roughly 60%, is open space. And this is simply has the building work. So starting from the first floor at the bottom, second, third, fourth, and then fifth to eighth are similar, is an explanation of how the building works. At the lowest level, the building to the north is primarily parking with some mixed use close to the water's edge. The other building is primarily restaurant and retail and housing above it. The rest of it is all open. The building, the floor above that, parking continues up, and then eventually, starting on the third floor and above, in the northerlymost building, are the apartment units, 150 in the north building and 30 in the south building. Now, there's a big contrast difference here, which I hope you can all appreciate, between this board and two boards now. This is the original DEIS plan done by previous architects. And if you simply compare the amount of red on this building and the location of what at that point was a really southerly building blocking the view from Seacore Road, and if you compare that drawing to this drawing, it should be pretty obvious why that drawing represents 60% green space, this one represents 48% green space. And as importantly, is the views to the river are not encumbered by the opposing. The next two I'll go through very quickly because they are essentially, this is scheme C, they're the same as scheme A. The coverage on the ground is the same, 60% open space. The only difference is that the town was interested in having a higher ratio of parking, 1.7 cars per residential unit instead of 1.2. Developer is going to build either scheme. The result of that is that the northerly building has one additional floor of parking before the apartments start. So this scheme is a nine-story building on the north. This one is an eight-story building. The lower building is the same, four stories, all cases. And maybe I haven't emphasized, but I will, the buildings have been pushed as far to the north as possible. You might sort of say, why would you push them against the tanks, the gas tanks here? Because we were trying to leave as much open space as possible here, and by building the garage underneath the apartments, we feel that we can get up above the gas tanks before the units are there. And that seemed to be a good compromise for everyone. The other, next board is essentially identical to what I just explained to you, other than the fact that there's one more layer of parking. Now, to me, the most interesting ones, and I hopefully to you, because I think it helps everyone to understand in three dimensions what we're talking about, are two boards of renderings and two boards of the model, which is the photograph. And the view one is, I've come out of the train station. The westerly end of the train station, when you're up high, is a little overlooked, and if you're on that, that's a disco ledge, it's a steel rail which exists there. And overlooked, that's what I see, it's open to the river. And if I were down, out here where the ferry boat comes in, which is this scheme, and I look back, I see the train station, the red roof building here in the distance. This is the four-story building, southerly building with a restaurant, retail at the lowest level, and park by it. And, oh, let me just break that slide. This, the third year, is if we were coming out of the lobby of the north building, I've just come down from my residence, maybe I've just come out from working out at the fitness club, or parking in the garage, the lowest level, because I want to use the park or I want to go to the restaurant. That's the view, looking south across the new open space. There's a play area down here. Boardwalk is to the right, and the building we are now in is right there, Angle Park and Beyond that. And in fact, looking at the boardwalk and whatever connections, you go right out to Angle Park. There's a little vignette here as you get closer, gives you a feeling of the character of what could be developed for a restaurant right down there at ground level, looking out to the river. And the view here is if I were coming in between the two buildings. And this is the residential approach to the buildings. Again, the view still straight through the river. And right here, towards the end of the north building, is some mixed-use retail and business. Now, there are obviously many views of the model that could be taken. We've selected three here because we think it sort of gives an overview of what this project is all about. And I think architecturally what this project's about, I've talked about the wharf-style buildings, but I honestly believe that I think what this project's about is in addition to making it financially viable and therefore having to build something which you rent, buildings, 60% of this goes back to the town. I think it is really given.
Village.
Village, sorry. The village, it really is given the waterfront, exactly, the village.
I'm from Boston.
So, those are the views of the green space, and maybe the last one will be for the building. This is looking now southwest, and you can see the continuation of the park all the way down to Angle Park, using the two buildings next to train station. Okay? Thank you.
We've had a team of highly qualified and top professionals working on behalf of the village with the board of trustees on this. Let me introduce Michael Zarin, our special legal counsel.
I'll be very brief and probably just parrot, not as well, some of the things that I think you've already heard. The village board brought together a negotiating team consisting of a private real estate firm known as HRA, a planning consultant firm, Cleary Consulting, engineering firm, the Verta Bartolucci, and myself, the law firm of Zarin and Stigman. We have all worked on behalf of the village, independent and only on behalf of the village to negotiate the terms of the agreement that you see today, we're going forth proceeding upon. It's been, especially the last six months, an amazingly difficult challenge. And the challenge has been, I think, to incorporate the extensive public input we receive with holding true to the objectives that have been part of this planning process for the last 10-plus years. And these are embodied in many of the master plans, and they call for, I quote, intensive mixed-use development on this site while maximizing public open space. And that's been an extraordinary challenge, as many of you know because you've been part of this process. How do you create the type of additional taxes and income to the village? Have someone pay for the $2 million it's going to cost us to acquire this property and clean the property from old industrial contaminated use? And how do we maintain this quality space forever or in perpetuity to ensure that it remains the type of waterfront that you see today in these renderings and the model? That's been the challenge of the village, and that is why, I think, as the mayor said, we've spent the last six months, this negotiating team, trying to get it right. And I think we feel that we've done that. Clearly, and I think the architect alluded to it, we followed a pretty well-accepted principle of land use planning called clustering. And that is to concentrate the development in one footprint, in one area, while maximizing the rest of the site for public open space. And that's a principle that is followed throughout the county, in fact, throughout the country, and is increasingly gaining acceptance as a method of creating the type of development you want, creating the type of private income, and at the same time, creating a maximum amount of open space. That's what we've done, and we've approached this as a trade-off. We've used throughout this process the group HRA, a private real- We've used throughout this process, the group HRA, a private real estate development consultant firm, to provide the board with the numbers, with the transactional numbers, with the costs, with the profits, with the income that could be expected of this project, to determine what we needed, one, to generate an income, to build out the type of public space that we wanted to build out. And I assure you, and if anyone's interested, we have the reports, that we generated our own numbers, our own assumptions, income, costs, expenses, rate of return and the like, to try to arrive at a realistic viable threshold for what needed to be built on the private side to accomplish, I think, what we heard from the village wanted in the public side. And, and that, as I mentioned before, was a very fine line and very balanced. You take away, for example, ten units more off of the development, and all of a sudden you're left short with the income necessary to have the private sector pay for and build out the public space. And we came to what was a rate of return that was accepted in the real estate community, not on the high side, but a rate of return that we determined was necessary to build this. This is a public-private partnership. And you can see them throughout the country, where the public resources are limited, you try to maximize the private so you can build the type of what we think is going to be some of the highest quality mixed-use public space along the Hudson River. And you'll determine for yourself, but just, just, just picture the sunny day and picture the hundreds, hundreds of people that will come down and find a reason to come to the waterfront, to come to the Hudson River, for any variety of activities. Indeed, I think it's worth knowing, we did some surveys of some of the other parks around Westchester, and looked at, what do they generate without mixed use? We found that they generate four people, six people, this is Labor Day, seventy degrees on a beautiful day. This, this park, this public setting, we expect will generate probably four people in one day for the Hudson River, for eating, for playing, for sitting out on the grass, for fishing, for the public beach, for just sunbathing, for any number of activities, kayak rentals, bait shop rentals, fishing rod, in one day than probably most of these passive parks generate in a year's time. We have generated, we picked a proposal where the developer will pay for the acquisition and reimburse the village so they are made whole, will pay for the maintenance of this space in perpetuity, will pay for the build-out of this public space, and will allow the village to go forward and develop what they think is going to be one of the first-class waterfronts along the Hudson River. At this time, the process will move forward at a fairly rapid pace. We've now spent approximately two to three years in the design since the first day we signed the MOU, not to say years before that in planning. We will be receiving a final environmental impact statement shortly and releasing that to the public. We will then go through the zoning. We will go through a very important stage called site plan review. And many of the people who are here today, we sincerely hope participate in that process because that'll be the time where we begin to put the meat on some of the conceptual plans that you see. What are the materials going to look like? What are the features? What are the lighting? Really, how do we design and what does this eventually look like? And that'll be a process that will, will happen imminently. And again, it will be a public process, and we hope that the public participates at the same extent that they participated today. We have a number of other approvals that we'll have to go through, and then we will hopefully sign a land disposition agreement, which will be the final act in the project. So, welcome, and we look forward to receiving your input as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, thank you. We're past our witching hour a little bit, and we're going to close with just a couple brief comments from folks who've spent hundreds of hours of their own personal time on making this a better project. If I could introduce the deputy mayor, Ms. Markwood Moses.
Welcome, everyone. You know, I realized this morning that, I think since March to now is about nine months since we wrote forward a plan. It's enough time to give birth to a baby, and in reality, this is our baby. It's the baby of the village board, Capelli Enterprises, the Millen Shaker, and all our negotiating team. We're proud of this baby. We look forward to seeing it grow up. We've got a project that has the sixty percent open space compared to more than once. We've reduced the density by twenty percent. The most important things to me are we kept the view sheds whole, and we've taken the parking up to a one point seven ratio with all parking on-site, not affecting one commuter space. And this, to me, is of paramount importance, that commuter parking stays whole, and has stayed whole and will stay whole. So we look forward to going ahead with this. We're proud of our public-private partnership with Capelli and his associates and all of our associates. I want to thank you all for coming today and look forward to meeting some of you later at the open house or whatever. Thank you.
You probably saw in the newspapers that one of our board members were hit by a car outside the county buildings, and we thought that he was going to be laid up for a while, but this project drove him back out again. He has a bit of a cane with him, but let me introduce Miguel Hernandez.
I really don't have very much more to add. I think the project has been explained. However, I do want to make one interesting point that is interesting to me, that with this addition of this open space, which totals approximately 2.7 acres, this park, in effect, does not stop here when you see what's green. This park is immediately adjacent to Lewis Angle Park. So there's seven more acres, so now we have close to 10 acres of open space along the river. And this building of this area has in fact stimulated the town of Austin to make improvements to its park, Lewis Angle Park. So I think that we have significant open space all along the river. And some of you may know, we are working, we hope we can get more open space along the river if we ever get to build that bridge over Star and Dock. That will still be more additional amount of open space available to the public along the river. And we have some plans to continue this project or continue making the river available as we go north. As you know, Metro North took over some of our bridges, never rebuilt them, and, but we have Crow Bucky Beach to the north, which is currently inaccessible, and I hope someday we're going to have that available. So, the goal here has been all along to make the river accessible to the public. Thank you very much.
Please join me with Mr. Ernest McFadden.
First of all, thanks for coming out on a, for turning out to be sort of a duck weather today, but it's glad to see you here. Glad to see you here. One of the things that we as a board talked about a number of hours and a number of months, obviously, from the time of the DEIS hearing now, is that this has to be a public-private venture. It has to be some direct benefit to the village. And I think, as was pointed out today, and I'm not going to belabor it, point that this project provides for the village of Austin and residents of the town that it provides an opportunity to access land that we haven't had the ability to access before. The other part that this project provides that I'm extremely excited about is the ability to bring employment opportunities to Austin. As you can imagine, the restaurant and the managing and the running of the facilities which sort of requires manpower, and so we're excited about that. The other parts of the project that I'm just as equally excited about, it gives us the ability to make the housing opportunity, keeping in line with, I think, what our county executives pushing in terms of affordable housing. We, we, we help faster than, and I want to thank Mr. Capelli Enterprises for agreeing, and that has never been an issue from the time we brought it up. They've welcomed that opportunity, and we're, we're pleased to see it. So again, we're delighted to be here as a board. For those of you who are supportive of the project, we hope that you come up to us and give us some, some input as to your thoughts on the project. For those who are not supportive of it, please, give it an opportunity. At this point in time, this project will bring tax dollars, needed tax dollars, to the village of Austin for some time to come. So again, thank you for coming out this afternoon.
Our time board member, Virginia Pollock.
Thank you, good afternoon. Now, it's a tough act, I get the back cleanup, but we're making a attempt at it. I, I think everything's been said that, that needs to be said about this project. It was a long, hard negotiation. I believe that we have a, a public-private sector agreement that will benefit the entire community, taxpayers as well, and, and I'm looking forward to moving forward through the next process. I, I think Michael Zarin summed it up about as best it could be summed up, as, as the potential and what it means for this community as a whole. And so, just in brief, I'd like to thank the people that are already work for us, but to thank Lewis and Miss there for putting together what I believe is a real good public-private partnership, and I hope we can continue to go forward. Thank you.
Is Jackie Weir here? I'm sorry, yes. And Jackie is president of the ADO, and I think that President Dan Reivers, Dan here? If not, Mr. Fedegin is the vice president of the Austin Chamber of Commerce. Would you like an opportunity to, to say something or? Excuse me, Jack.
Sir, I won't, I won't make it long because a lot of us have work to go back to, but I want to work, men, both mayor, Capelli, the citizens, and both opposing and for the waterfront, for the time and the effort that they have gone out to the community to talk to people, to find out what everyone would like on this waterfront. The alliance is pleased to work with the village to try to promote not only the downtown area but the waterfront area, and this is going to bring a new revitalization to this area, not only affecting the main street, State Street and Spring Street, but the adjoining areas, the Arcadia, Croton Avenue, Chilmore, and Highland Avenue. It's the, it's the sign of growth and stability that's coming to this area, and we look forward to work on it.
Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm thinking Dan's place this morning, he had a previous engagement. I also would like to congratulate everybody involved, starting with the mayor, Paul, trustees, and Capelli. I've been in Austin four and a half years, a lot has happened during that time. We started this process, if those of you who go back prior to Hurricane Floyd, with parcels A, B, and C. I didn't believe it could happen, given the economics of only one parcel. I was disproved this morning, and I want to congratulate everybody for the terrific response. I went to every public hearing, the, the, both sides were represented well. A lot of what I see today responds to both sides, and I wish everybody only the best in going forward.
Whoops, came off. I noticed that we have several of our, Richard Lee? It's Richard and Sandy both left? Okay. Oh, Sandy's here, okay. I didn't know, or Michael, anybody would like to make any comments? If not, we'll just, invite the press to come up and ask us any questions they would like.
Thank you very much for coming. There's food at the end of the room here. This afternoon, we'll have an open house that runs for six hours from three to nine p.m. Thank you very much.
I'm going to write the agreement, but I have permanent easements, unalterable, and a full of some easements. I mean, you know, don't really write them, I'm telling you. Legally, I can make this so you can sleep out here every morning.
And if they call the state to, to say that you were sleeping out somewhere?
But we probably will, but we probably will have some now. As much as, as a public will have full access to the performance. No, no, if we, you know, we lay at this position, it's, it's.
This building is going to be nine stories high.
Irregularly.
Idol?
So this is where you can display the signs, the building was.
Yeah, that happens. And this, and this is where the, the bus terminal was, or is at this time.
Over here is the American Hitchcock Building.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's right, that is.
Yeah.
I guess that would have to come down.
About sixty-five feet wide. Okay. There's essentially an apartment, a car and apartment, it's about sixty-five feet. The total length of the building is about... It's over 300 feet long at its longest point, but it's, it's broken.
Nine story, ninety feet high.
But it's, it's as far north on the site as it can be, it's right up against the tanks, and interestingly, if you were to go on that site now, and if you stood here, you know, and you look there, you're very aware of the tanks, those would disappear because the building would form the new backdrop for the whole village dream.
Yeah, but if, if the people who live here will still see the tanks, no matter how high they are.
Well, they'll be above them, but I mean, that's, that's the developer's problem, to rent, and it's like anyone else, it's in a high rise.
This is the nine-story building, ninety feet high, 300 feet long, and 65 feet wide, right up against the tanks. Biggest thing on the Hudson.
Okay, we're standing in front of scheme C of the riverfront proposal. This is the building. This building is going to be approximately 425 to 430 feet long, not including the roof, 130 feet wide, including the parking, the light, and the building, and just nine stories high or 90 feet, that's where I meant, not including the roof. The roof would make it more than 90 feet high. And the oil tanks will be right over there, so it'll cover over the oil tanks.